You are watching XS Laporte County Channel ninety seven. Coming up next is the October fifth, twenty twenty two meeting of the Laporte County Election Board Special Meeting. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www.xslaportecounty.org.
It's Wednesday, October fifth, two thousand twenty-two at the two P M. Laporte County Election Board Meeting. I'd call the meeting to order if we'd start by rising for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States. One nation under God, indivisible, infinite in its essence.
Cadence was. All right, we'll start with roll call. Charles Waterson, President, present. Nelson Picardo, Vice President.
Present.
Heather Stevens, Clerk and Secretary.
Present.
And we have a quorum. First order of business will be consider approval of the September sixteenth, these seven minutes?
Yes.
Okay, I had a chance to review those. Do I have a motion to approve?
I know that we have approved the September sixteenth meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Those meeting minutes will be approved. We now open up the floor to public comment. No public comment? All right. There's Quora.
Earl Cunningham, sixty-three, eleven, West Shiva Drive, La Porte, Indiana. I have a couple of concerns about, uh, in your new business, it says complaint number two, Indiana Code three fourteen, two dash nine, violation against Jody Slaybaugh alleged by Richard Kentaff. I'm shocked that this is on your agenda because I read this in the news a couple of days ago. That it had already been turned over to the Sheriff's Department. And a quote from one of your board members says that he had discussed with the other board members. Well, I don't think that is exactly what they mean by a public meeting. And it would seem to me that that's a violation of the open door law. If we proceeded past this point without the other two members' consent in a public meeting, I believe that reporting directly. And the other thing that bothers me the most is he's on the election board. Why wouldn't Mr. Picardo let his partner or owner make the complaint himself? We know the arguments between Mr. Friedman and Mr. Slaybaugh have been arguing for a couple of months publicly. Why would an election board member go to the sheriff with a report from Mr. Friedman, so to speak? Thank you. Alan Stevens, Chairman, Laporte County Republican Party. I guess I've got a couple of questions. I, uh, listened to the news Monday morning and I hear that the election board met and decided to refer this complaint against Jody Slaybaugh to the Sheriff's Department, which was a little curious to me because I'm on the email distribution list. I never got a notice for a meeting. So I'm assuming, you know, I'm not a college educated man, but I'm assuming one of two things happened. Either this board willfully broke the open door law and met in private and decided this, or one member of this board went rogue and is just outright telling a lie. I don't know which one it is. And, uh, if Mr. Picardo was so concerned that laws were being broke that he had to immediately run to the Sheriff's Department with an election board complaint, there was a second election board complaint made that alleges violations of law. Did you run with that one to the Sheriff's Department? Let's face it, this is just an attempt on behalf of Mr. Picardo and his boss Shaw Friedman to squelch political dissent to try to shut Jody Slaybaugh down. He's done it time and time again with Dennis Matheny. He's tried doing it with Tim Stamos. And now he's coming after Jody Slaybaugh. It's a sad state of affairs in Laporte County politics. Thank you.
Rodney McCormick, six seventeen, Union Street, Michigan City, Indiana. Here we go again. I said earlier, election time. Pandering, trying to get people to vote for you and shutting down those who speaks the truth. Mr. Picardo, I know you're gonna have a great response, but you guys are hypocrites. And I'm talking about you and Shaw Freeman. You guys have done a lot of wrong stuff in our community, including, um, some things that are improperly done at the Michigan City Housing Authority as well. I'd just like to say that you guys are hypocrites. And it's public record, anyone, anyone here, since we are public agency at the Michigan City Housing Authority, get a copy of Shaw Freeman's contract and look at the deadline date and see when he turned it in. Bullying people seems to be the best thing for your office or the office you work for. People that speak out against you, you pay ministers to speak out against them, you personally attack them or you have, um, even went as far to say that all the black ministers don't like Rodney McCormick. I don't like any black ministers that's involved with politics and that's selling out their community. That's who I, that's what I stand for. I fight for the people and I believe in what we need to do as public servants. I take my oath serious. At some point, this nonsense needs to stop. We need to think about what we're doing and what we should be doing here. As I said it before, we need to make voting easier for everyone. But it's, it's not. There's different rules at early voting in Michigan City, different rules in Laporte. Why? Under Democratic rule, there's been nothing but trouble. I ask you two Republicans to please step up and undo what they've done for years. We do not see any candidate that's in the Democratic Party until election time come around. The pandering, the usage of election laws and signs, putting your signs, one of the biggest offenders, like I said earlier, is Sheila Mateus. I think they picked up twelve of her signs within, with, uh, just yesterday, out of bounds. And, and right, right next to him is Dan Grandquist, signs everywhere. We need to do things proper and in order. If Mr. Slaybaugh, or however you pronounce his name, forgive me if I mispronounced it, if he did something wrong, I would hope that you would have an open door meeting and make sure a public meeting so where it can be addressed. And, and everybody has a right, Mr. Picardo, to due process. Due process. Thank you.
I'm gonna give you something to talk about, Stan. My name is Jody Slaybaugh. I reside at twenty-four oh two North State Road thirty-nine, Laporte, Indiana. I'm the accused here. I didn't appreciate y'all running my name down on Monday morning. Okay, we're gonna, normally I write this stuff up. It sits on my desk. I don't attend these meetings. This is the first meeting I've been in. This is a meeting important enough to defend my name, defend my business, defend my character. You had no right to attack it. Let's start with what I wrote. Hello, election board members. My name is Jody Slaybaugh. Laporte County resident, business owner slandered on the radio and website, on the website, Hometown News, Monday morning. Nelson Picardo gave a press release representing this whole election board. In his press release, Nelson said, and I quote, "The evidence appears credible and supported by two other election board members, Heather Stevens and Charles Waterson requesting the sheriff's office investigates the claims." Is that true? If it's not true, why is Nelson speaking on behalf of this election board and making this claim? My second question is, when a, when a complaint is reviewed and voted on, where does that happen at? You see, I'm not familiar with the proceedings of this election board. Until yesterday afternoon, I'd never even seen one of these meetings. I watched, I did a little research and I watched two meetings online last night. I didn't see any mention of a complaint. I see my name today. I didn't see any vote on a complaint. I didn't see any recommendation affording a complaint to a sheriff's office. I'm a little disturbed. My name is on the, on the agenda today, after, almost a week now after I've been accused. So I'm asking, what is the procedure? Isn't this board open to open door laws? Apparently you are because now I'm on the agenda. Now somebody's gotta cover their tails. Or is this board allowed to me to say round the clock, discuss complaints, take votes over breakfast? Is that what y'all do? Again, I don't know how this board operates, but it seems to me if a vote happened, it should have been a public meeting. Warren Buffett said it takes twenty years to build a reputation, only five minutes to destroy it. I would argue in Laporte County, it takes even less than five. I would argue it only takes spreading the truth online and belonging to the wrong Republican Party. That'll have your reputation restored, or destroyed in this county. Nelson, what you did is an insult to common decency, ethics, and plain wrong. I'm not a public figure. I'm not an elected or appointed official. I'm just an average citizen afforded due process and equal protection under the law. You, as an attorney, know this. You slandered my good name. You slandered my business reputation. You slandered both without a shred of evidence, without a minute of investigation, with nothing more than a hearsay complaint from a guy on Facebook that has an axe to grind with me. Except for Heather Stevens, none of you know me. You may have opinions about me. You may like or dislike me, but neither of you men know me, neither of you men have spoke to me. You've never met me before. You don't know anything about my business, nor my residency. You have labeled me a criminal on local radio station and local news channels, complete with sentencing guidelines for a crime I never committed. You, you caused not just injury to myself, but to my business and my employees. What right did this election board have to go public and harm my reputation and my business reputation and character without due process and without even a proper investigation? Again, I'm not a private or a public official. I'm a private citizen. I'm afforded due protections and process under the law. According to Hometown News Now, the Republican Chairman Alan Stevens said no vote was ever taken on this complaint. I'd like an explanation why I'm being, I'm being condemned online. As I get older, I get more reserved in my response. Monday morning, my first thought was call my attorney and file suit. Sue all you guys. When someone attacks my character and attacks my business, when I've done nothing wrong, you've awakened a bear. The board has caused irreparable harm to my business and my character and I spent a lifetime building. So I'm requesting an explanation of your actions. In my opinion, Nelson, your actions are exactly that of an E nine-one-one operator receiving a call from some resident claiming her neighbor, a business owner, is dealing drugs from his location. But before he calls the cops, he calls the radio station. He says, hey, E nine-one operator, this is the station. Hey, listen, we got, we got a report from John Doe, longtime business owner. He's a drug dealer. We got reason to believe this is a legitimate complaint and we're gonna send it to the sheriff to investigate. The radio station and local press prints the E nine-one operator's story. That's you, Nelson. John's a longtime business owner. This is what the, this is what the press gonna print. John's a longtime business owner. He's also a Republican. His legs still be dealing drugs out of his business for years. If he's found guilty, he faces up to five years, thousand dollar fine. Who can tell me why E nine-one operators don't do this? You know why. You know damn well why. Because they'd be immediately terminated from their job if they pulled a stunt like that. That's because in this country, whether you like it or not, everybody has a right to due process and equal protection under the law. Nelson, what you did was a public lynching of my character and my business. You, you attacked him without even a single fact, without even investigation, without even a vote. I'm on the agenda today. You attacked my character four days ago. Well, let's call it three days ago. With nothing but hearsay from a guy on Facebook. That's credible. That's real credible. I'm done. This action was so wrong on so many levels. Nelson, you should be removed from the board. I got enough.
Thank you. Any more public comment?
I got one. Hi, everybody. My name is Sergeant Anthony Edward Lewis, United States Army Infantry Retired. I'm a resident in Michigan City. I'm also the precinct chairman for Cool Spring Four. I, um, anticipated showing up just to witness the public ceremony here. And then I went to my mailbox and I found this libelous slanderous flyer in my mailbox. One of the things that I have noted as I try to follow politics online usually is that the Republican Party likes to project. They like to project onto Democrats what they're guilty of. And this is calling Frank Marvan anti-woman. I take tremendous exception to this. This campaign flyer sent by the Indiana Republican State Committee. I'm at a loss for words. I just wanted to be able to make my objection about this known, not because I expect anything from you regarding this. I just need to know that you know this is happening on your watch, that if you're leaning left or leaning right, Democrat or Republican, involved in any way in our political process, or just live in this county and give a shit, then guess what? This cannot be allowed. If you're a politician and you have a position on an issue, you can promote your position on these issues. But this is muckraking. This is beneath any party in this country. Thank you for your attention. Thank you.
Any more public comments? Anyone on Zoom? All right, public comment is closed at this time. We'll move on to the first order of business. Um, is a complaint alleging Indiana Code violation three dash nine dash one dash thirteen against the committee to elect John Lake and Republicans for Lake PAC, um, alleged by Republican Chairman Alan Stevens. Uh, we can open up the forum for discussion on this. We received a complaint from Alan Stevens and it's, we've looked into it. We need to notify, um, Mr. Lake and whoever's involved with the, with the PAC and the committee of a chance to be here. Um, we're, we're talking about a violation of election law, not criminal in nature. So I think we're going to be meeting about that again. Am I correct? In the next, in the next month to discuss what's gonna happen with that, so that we can make a public decision on what the appropriate remedy is for the alleged violation. And the alleged violation is just that the, for the committee to elect John Lake in twenty eighteen, um, their chairperson, um, was also recently the treasurer, the listed treasurer on the Republicans for Lake PAC, and that is not allowed by, um, election law three dash nine dash one dash thirteen. Unless that person is also the candidate, but that's not the case here. So we will be visiting that and making a decision. Um, but we can open it up for discussion now.
I just, my, my comments regarding that first complaint is, uh, it's not a criminal complaint. Is that right? It doesn't carry any criminal charges, right?
This actually does ask for a criminal referral be made to the appropriate agency for violations. If you look at number ten.
Number ten, what? I'm sorry.
On the actual complaint.
Oh, I'm, I know, but the, the Indiana code that's being alleged to be violated, does that carry criminal sanctions?
No.
Okay.
It would depend on which code, which violation, because they're claiming multiple. There's more than one here.
Well, the one that I've, I've read on the agenda is Indiana Code three nine one thirteen. And I think, I believe that's what was in the complaint as well. And I think the, the, the issue is regarding the, uh, the individual that was on the PAC for, for one, um, PAC and also the other one. Is that right?
Correct.
So that is, that, that is the, the complaint is regarding that specific code.
It is, but it does at the, at the end of the complaint also want us to evaluate if it meets three dash fourteen dash one dash fourteen, failure to file a report and then three dash fourteen dash one dash thirteen filing a fraudulent report. Um, and we need them here to discuss that, that portion. Um, so if we could, I would move to table this to our next meeting to allow the notice to them.
Second.
All right. Motion in a second.
So just to clarify, we're asking for this to be tabled so that we can provide notice to
Correct.
John Lake.
Correct.
And then are we allowing them to present information regarding the allegations?
Well, they need to be here, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I, I, I move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That carries, uh, that'll be moved to the next meeting. The second, um, is complaint in Indiana Code three dash fourteen dash two dash nine of violation against Jody Slaybaugh as mentioned during public comment alleged by Richard Kentaff. I'll start by addressing this. Um, it could probably be a board member comments, but let's start now. So, um, a few things, Mr. Slaybaugh, and you're right. This is the first time I've ever, I've ever seen you. I didn't know who you were when your name was brought up. So it didn't, I, there was no hidden agenda for me when this was brought up. So when this complaint came through, I believe it came to, it came to you, correct, Nelson, as a member of the election board?
I got it as well separately.
Okay, so you two got it and then it's made its way to me once that happened. Okay. So we got the complaint. Um, at first it was just a, a written complaint. And in my view, when, when it was handed to me, um, the word due process is, it keeps being mentioned here and I completely agree with that. Which is why, in my reading of the statute and my view of how things are supposed to operate, I didn't think it was appropriate to have Mr. Slaybaugh forced in here to answer to alleged criminal violations. Cause then what we're doing is putting you on the stand, um, and I'm addressing you directly, but everyone at the same time. What we're doing is putting you on the stand to come here and defend yourself against a criminal allegation that we didn't make. It was, it was made by somebody else. We're not judges. What burden of proof do we offer you to, to overcome? And we're asking you to prove yourself innocent? To me, that doesn't fall in our purview as an election board committee. So when that complaint was given to me, there was a discussion and my thought was, we're not investigative board. Give it to someone who does investigations. If this is alleged criminal allegation, give it to the people who do that. Let them investigate it. I'm certainly not gonna sit up here and have you come up here and prove your innocence. I'm a criminal defense attorney for most of the time. I'm on the election board, but that's what I do. The last thing I would advise a client to do is go to their, hey, go to that meeting where they accuse you of this and prove yourself innocent. Oh, and by the way, everything's recorded. So if this does eventually get charged by the prosecutor and you're in front of a judge, you've already provided all this evidence and tried to prove yourself innocent. That could be used against you. So that's why I said, just let's take it to whoever's got to investigate it. And there was no meeting held because in my view, that wasn't in our purview to do. And I didn't think it was fair to you. And then we talked to the Brad King, who's the election, uh, chairperson of the Secretary of State. And he seemed, it's, it's of his opinion that that is what we should have done was bring you in front of us. But to me, I would never, and I'm looking at this from an attorney's standpoint, I would never advise a client of mine to attend a hearing like that to put on the record things they're being accused of if their potential freedom is at stake. Even, I, I know the sentencing guideline was two and a half years. That's still your freedom of two and a half years. And we know people aren't going to jail for this, especially with, I don't know what, you know, anyone's record is, but it's, it's a relatively minor as far as how things can be, a level six felony. Now, that's why I said pass it to an investigative unit. In hindsight, based on what Brad's saying, we should have followed that statute and brought you in here. I still don't feel comfortable with that. But if that's the process we had to take, then hand up. We didn't take that process. Um, and secondly, uh, with this whole issue, the thing that really bothered me and I think is what bothers you the most, Mr. Slaybaugh, and I completely get it, is how this information got to the press. This was something apparently us three had a copy of and whoever brought it in, Mr. Kentaff. How did it get to the press that it was sent over to the, to the sheriff? I have no idea. Certainly wasn't me. But I, I don't, yeah, we'll let Nelson speak about, about that. Cause I, again, I only know what, what I did. I certainly didn't call anyone because I think that's inappropriate. Someone gave it, gave this complaint to this press before you're even, you know, investigated. Cause that's what, that's what should happen. If there's alleged criminal allegation, that's not my job to investigate that. I'm not gonna put you through that. That's not something I would advise. So that's exactly what happened on my end. And I think, uh, the board's end for as far as that complaint went. We got the complaint that day. That's the last I talked about it.
Yeah, I did reach out, um, after searching the, the Indiana Election Code book, I did reach out to Brad King because I have, I, I have sat through election board meetings for, for similar things. Um, and, and so I, I knew that this, this probably needed to come before us. So at that point I reached out to Brad and between the two of us, we had a discussion. We did find the proper codes and I immediately sent those codes on to the other two board members. But as to how this got into the media, Mr. Slaybaugh, I, I don't know, but I certainly apologize for that.
Thank you. Yes. So what, what I'll say regarding this is exactly what, what I've discussed with, with our board members. I know that it's easy to state that I was the one somehow that brought this complaint. I don't, I don't know you, Mr. Slaybaugh at all. I received a complaint from a concerned citizen, Mr. Kentaff. I shared that with our board. I didn't even know Heather got a copy. And because of the criminal nature, we, like Mr. Waterson said, we're not investigators. We're not judges. We're not prosecutors. Uh, we, and specifically I, I thought it'd be best to allow the sheriff's office to, to investigate this because that's their job. Uh, if, regardless of who it is, it could be a Republican, Democrat, I don't care. If someone comes to me with criminal allegations, I'm going, I'm not gonna sit on it. I'm going to forward that on to the proper authorities. I, I, like the other board members have said, I did give them a copy of what I received. I thought it'd be fair for them to see what I got. Uh, no one called for a meeting. No one asked for anything. Um, and it was forwarded on to the sheriff, period. I, again, it, I don't, I don't know you, Mr. Slaybaugh. I don't. It had nothing to do with, uh, who the person was. I received a complaint. I wasn't gonna sit on it and it got forwarded to the sheriff. Now, if these allegations are not true and there's an investigation going on, it's clear to me who it is that needs to be informed, whoever's investigating it, and that's would all be cleared up. The only communication that I've had with the media was I received a, a phone call and a text. And I explained to them exactly what I just explained here, that I received a complaint, uh, I shared it with the election board members and it was forwarded on to the sheriff's department. At no point in time did we have a, a serial meeting or something to discuss it, to vote on it. Again, th- these, these are serious allegations and you know, if it were me, I would want someone that actually does this as their job, an investigator, to take a look at it. Chuck and I happen to be attorneys, but you can serve on the election board and not be an attorney. The, the proper procedure is to have it investigated by someone that does that. And, um, that's, that was the decision, uh, that I thought was best. And I shared it with the board members and that's what happened. Um, if it's untrue, then that could be addressed with the people that are investigating it. I know it's on the agenda today and I think, I think it's correctly on there because of all of the issues that have come up. Uh, the, the, the only, um, the only thing that I believe that, that was stated correctly was that I don't know Mr. Slaybaugh. That is true. I don't know Mr. Slaybaugh. And I did forward the complaint to, to the sheriff's office, but I wasn't alleging anything. My office wasn't alleging anything. I received a complaint from a concerned citizen, Mr. Mr. Kentaff, period. If the board wants, I mean, it's on new business. Are we going to have the, the hearing?
Not today because I mean, Mr. Slaybaugh's never afforded the opportunity to read the complaint or, um, you know, in, in my eyes, he would have to form a defense or, uh, you know, it just.
I don't know that it's necessarily a defense. Um, I think, I, if you read the statute, I, I think what, what Mr. Slaybaugh would need to do is show us that yes, this, he, he does indeed. what Mr. Slave Law would need to do is show us that yes, this, he, he does indeed, LaPorte County is his, is his county of residency. That's, his address is where, where he says it is.
But again.
And it, it, I believe it even lists like different things. And I can't remember if that was a list or if that was something that Brad King and I had discussed. But documentation that would support that.
You know, and the other part of this conversation.
It looks like Mr. Slave Law would like to say something.
Oh, can we continue our discussion?
Yeah, we're going to continue our discussion first.
The other part of, of, of this as well is that that statute that, that Mr. King kept referring to, we've always used it for individuals that are on the ballot and residency regarding the ballot. So in my opinion, that is the proper realm, not when it's a, a voter that's not on the ballot, that has nothing to do with the actual administration, administration of the election. So that's another reason why I believe that it's best left in the hands of investigators.
I also feel that in order to send something on, you know, to, to even look at criminal charges, we would need more, more, more than just somebody said so.
But we are not the individuals that find probable cause as to whether or not a criminal. We can't charge anyone with anything.
According to the Indiana Code, we are.
That's, I, I disagree with that. That's just my opinion.
And since the discussion is open about you, Mr. Slave Law, please.
I, I like the discussion banner, back and forth. Nelson, I, again, I don't know you. I know what the press, I know what the press put out there and they said you said it. So this back and forth about you didn't say it. They said you did say it. Why you called the press, why there was any communication with this allegation with the press is beyond my scope. Okay? Just like I, my example I gave with the E nine one operative, they don't turn around and say, oh, hey, we got a complaint from Joe. They let the cops handle the business. I got no problem with that. Everything I own is registered to that business. I've never received mail any place but this address. When I moved into that place in, in August of two thousand, that place, you, you guys don't know what that place was. That place was a bodybuilding, weightlifting place. Okay? I'm not going to incriminate myself. Don't worry. Okay? That place has, that place had a studio apartment. It had showers. It had weightlifting equipment all throughout that whole warehouse. That's what I rented. Okay? And I rented it because it had a studio apartment. I'm a single guy. I'm not married. I don't own a piece of property anywhere in this state. I rent. That's what I do. Okay? I own a business. Everything I own is in that building. All my investments, every bit of everything I own is in that building. You guys want to turn around and take the word as some guy who's got an axe to grind with me on Facebook? I, I got no problem. All my tax returns, my driver's license, my car registration, my insurance, my checking account, everything I own. You won't find a piece of mail anywhere except that address in my name. Utility bills, you name it. Okay? So when you turn around and say, oh, and, and the other day, I'm not even a candidate. My God, I'm not even on a ballot someplace. I'm Joe Blow voter who's got a big mouth on Facebook and people want to try to shut me up because I don't agree with some of the politics in this county. And so here we are, oh my God, we got a, we got a felony case. You ruined my reputation. You run me through the mud. You can sit there and deny it. The press has put me out. You sit there playing every hour on the hour, all day Monday. Running my, I got my phone ringing up, blowing up. Jody, what the hell did you do? Oh my God, they said you're a felon. You're a criminal. Holy smokes, what did you do? That's the perception you put out there. Now you can deny it all you want. You know what you did. This isn't romper room. This ain't fifth grade, Mr. Sheila Mathias likes to say. This ain't fifth grade. We know what happens when you go out there and make an allegation against a long time business owner, a guy with a solid reputation. You turn around and you tarnish his reputation. Now you want to have a criminal investigator? I don't care. I bring the cops that can come visit me. I can show them my little studio apartment and whatever you want to do. I don't care. But don't turn around and run my name and run my business through the mud when you don't know anything about me.
And this is exactly why I didn't want to have this in a public meeting to discuss this because just like you have to do now, you're coming up here to defend yourself. And I don't think that's right. And I don't think that was the essence of the election law. That's why I thought let the people who have to investigate it do it on the down low. Unfortunately, somehow it's not on the down low.
Right. It's right out in the public. So now you guys have, you guys have put a stain out there on my reputation. And what are you guys going to do about it?
That's what I'm saying. What, what I did is I said, we need to forward this to someone who can investigate it because it's not, I don't want you to have to come do this, to have to come defend yourself or prove yourself innocent.
Believe me, I got plenty of work to do. I, I don't want to be down here. But when somebody turns around and damages my business and damages my character, I got something to say about it.
I agree. I hundred percent agree, but that's, this is what I was trying to avoid and.
Right. Well, maybe you ought to talk to the guy on the board over here. Maybe that's the guy you ought to talk to. Maybe you ought to find a new seat over here for this guy.
Mr. Slave Law, just so you know, I didn't call the press regarding any of this.
Well, they quoted you.
They asked me what I did and I explained to them exactly what I did. I received a complaint and I sent it to the sheriff's office.
Shouldn't have done that.
Well, that's, that's.
You knew you were damaging my character and you knew you were damaging my business. What?
Quite frankly.
What do you think is, what do you think is going to happen? What do you think is going to happen? When you put a business name and you put a home, a business owner's name in the press about a possible criminal investigation, what do you think is going to happen?
Sir, that's exactly why I wanted the sheriff's office to handle it because they.
You should have kept your mouth shut is what you should have done.
Thank you. We can.
You should have kept your damn mouth shut.
There's nothing to vote on right now. So we'd move on to the mobile voting unit schedule. We've got. No, I think we're closing on public comment.
We need more late people on the board. At least they'll open up the book and read the code.
We're moving on to the mobile voting unit schedule.
Hey, let me just say simply, Mr. Slave Law, if he didn't come today and tell you the truth, this would have gone on for another couple of weeks. What are the assumptions that you have?
Thank you. Public comment is closed, please. We've got a mobile voting unit schedule set up for the two thousand twenty-two general election mobile voting unit, prepared by Francine and voter registration. Thank you. We have a copy here that runs through from October twelfth to November fourth. And it lists all the places that the mobile voting unit is going to be for early voting. And it kind of rotates from Michigan City to Westville and then South LaPorte to LaPorte, Michigan City, LaPorte. It kind of goes in a circle. We revisit some of these places, but that unit will be out at a lot of a lot of apartments, churches, senior centers. And if I, you've had a chance to review this, correct?
I have, yeah.
Do I have a motion to approve this and post it on the public forum?
Yes, please.
Okay.
I'd second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that motion carries this mobile voting unit schedule will be posted in the public forum and be available for everyone to use. And that will be the schedule of the mobile voting unit.
Thank you, Francine.
Yes, thank you. That concludes the new business. We'll move on to board member comments. Who wants to start? Nelson, you want to lead it on?
You know, I, I think I made most of my comments regarding the situation under new business. But again, what I'll mention is we are not an investigative body. We are not judges. We are not prosecutors. We're tasked with running the election. If an individual comes before, anyone comes before this board and presents allegations of criminal wrongdoing, I do not feel comfortable being the one to have to serve as investigator and judge in a matter. And so then we would ask, you know, that an investigative body addresses which is what I did in this situation. So again, if there are, if there's any information to be shared regarding the matter, there are people that are investigating it and can do a much better job than anyone that can do it up here on this, sitting up here. And that's, that's where I'll leave it. You know, I'm, I'm, my other comment was I'm glad that we have a robust schedule for the voting unit. That's, that's great to see. I'm glad that it's going out to all those places. I, I hope that it gets lots of use. And so thank you for, to Francine for putting that together and getting that before us so that we can get that, that unit to be used during early voting. Those are all the comments I have. Thank you.
I, I don't think anybody's comfortable having to, having to have Mr. Slave Law or anybody else come in here and defend themselves. However, I, I also understand that when you accept a position on this board, that, that is, that is part of the job. And I, I do understand that. It's not comfortable at all, but, but I get it. Otherwise, our, our, our officers would, would have no time to do anything because they, you get mad at your neighbor and you, you sit and say, oh, so and so did something. Well, this, this is something that we, we should have taken a look at. We should have talked with Mr. Slave Law. And it would have been, it probably could have been fairly easy. Instead, this is, this is a nightmare, especially for him. So I just think that in the future, I, I know, I know I'm going to look at the codes a lot harder. I, I spend a lot of time with my nose in that book and apparently it still isn't enough. So I will continue to, to keep reading and keep highlighting. So that's all I have to say. I'm excited to, I'm excited to get the mobile voting unit out. I'm excited to start early voting next Wednesday. I'm ready to go. So that's it from me.
All right. And for me, again, I feel, I feel horrible about the situation with Mr. Slave Law for, for one main reason. The fact that his name has been dragged through the mud without his due process. If this went the way I thought it was going to go, when I was brought this complaint and forwarded to an investigative party, it could have been investigated and been done with. Without criminal charges being filed, just it would have been investigated. However, it got to the media somehow prior to any, it got to the media prior to any comments were made about it. That's the part that bothers me the most is that this information that was just sent to us somehow made it to the media, regardless of, of who did it. But then the media reached out to one of us for comment. So they had it somehow beforehand and that, that bothers me. Mainly because if we were to investigate this, the way the code book lays out, we're already putting Mr. Slave Law's name on blast that way because we're putting him in a public meeting where it's going to be on an agenda that says there's a complaint against him. And that's now out in the public. So the way that I interpreted the code and the way I wanted this to go was that an investigative unit that is in charge of investigations and can afford Mr. Slave Law due process handles this without anybody knowing about it until someone has to know about it. Is, and that would have been if the allegations were deemed credible or enough was probable cause to issue a warrant in the matter. Again, that's something I don't think I want to be a part of as a criminal defense attorney because I know that that's not, that's not our place to judge somebody a criminal or not. And I understand what the code says. It says we are in charge of investigating election law violations. This is a criminal matter. I get that the criminal code for this is under the election law umbrella. But to me, to me, it doesn't seem like something we should be doing, forcing people to come in here and violate their due process by having them prove their innocence. And that's exactly what occurred today. And that's exactly what I wanted to avoid. And that's, that's all the comments I have. And I just hope, I hope processes can be more efficient, more on, not on the down low as in a, like cover up matter, but on the down low as in if we get these investigations or these complaints, we forward them on to where they're supposed to go and not put out someone on blast or give it to the media to already deem Mr. Slave Law criminal. I, I think that's unfair to him. And I think it would be unfair for us to have to make that decision at a public meeting. But here we are. So I have a motion to adjourn.
I'd move that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.